Wednesday, May 9th meeting, City Commission Workshop. Today's emphasis is on the budget update. There are no official, I'm sorry, the Urban Master Plan, what am I talking about?
Not true.
It's too much. Lot of numbers these days. Today's update in fact is on our urban forests. And I know we've got some citizens here. There is no scheduled vote, so we're actually going to hear the presentation and we'll take the speakers at the conclusion of the presentation. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that setup. Mindy Mooreman, our urban forester, is here to provide an update of many months of progress on the Urban Forest Master Plan. The commission authorized the creation of this plan, which we've not had in the past, about a year ago. And so we've made a lot of progress. There's a lot of information to share. We've gathered a lot of input from citizens. And over the next hour or so, I think you'll be very pleased with the progress. So with that, I'd like Mindy to go ahead.
Thank you. Like the city manager said, you voted to approve the development of an Urban Forest Master Plan in March of 2017. As a refresher, the Urban Forest Master Plan uses data about the current state of our urban forest and community priorities to develop goals and strategies to improve the long-term health and sustainability of our urban forest. This provides a starting point for measuring changes in our urban forest and tracking our progress over time, so we can really see are the policies and programs that we have in place working for us to improve our urban forest. This is a long-term plan. We're looking at 10, 20, even 30 years into the future. This is a big resource, and change takes time. So depending on the goals, this could be 10, 20, or 30-year-long plan. And last year, the commission, when we heard about what the Urban Forest Master Plan was, had asked for an update when we had info about the current state of our urban forest. So that's most of what I'll cover today. And I'll also provide an update on the other portions of the plan, which is the community outreach and internal review. So after contracting with a natural resource management and planning consultant, Davi Resource Group, they're a natural resource planning agency that's done several of these plans for other cities throughout the nation, so they have a lot of experience. We've worked with them, starting in October 2017, when we kicked off the plan. We started developing an outreach plan, since community input is so important. We also started right away with the urban tree canopy assessment, and that uses high-resolution aerial imagery to measure the density and distribution of our urban forest. This is kind of a broad overview, overhead look of our trees and our urban forest. We continue to identify key stakeholders that would work with us and communicate with us throughout the process. We started a sample inventory, so if the UTC, the Urban Tree Canopy Assessment, looks at the forest, the sample inventory looks at the trees. So that gives us, dives deep into the information about the trees that make up our urban forest. Our consultant is performing an internal review of city programs and policies that affect how we manage trees. We've received the results of the Urban Tree Canopy Assessment, and that's what I'll be sharing with you today. We continued with community outreach, having public meetings and special interest group meetings that are still ongoing. We also have a survey online that people can take. We'll compile the results of that input and feedback at the end of this month and going into June, and then we'll work with our consultant to develop goals and objectives that take all of those things, the data about our urban forest, and the information that we receive from the community, to develop goals and objectives. And then we'll work with them to develop strategies to achieve those goals and objectives. We expect a draft plan in August, and the final plan sometime in September. For outreach, we've developed a website, talgov.com/tallitrees. This is a landing page for information about the plan, where people can go, they can find a link to the online survey there, that'll be up through the end of May. We scheduled stakeholder meetings. Those are organizations that are considered to be key players in the management of our urban forest. So we had representatives from all of our city divisions, the professional community and community organizations that influence or interact with trees. So for example, Florida Landscape and Nursery Association, local landscape architects, our extension office, Tall Timbers, the Tallahassee Builders Association, the Chamber of Commerce, the Canopy Roads Committee, all had representatives at those meetings. And at those meetings, I'll back up, we performed a self-assessment of the way we manage our trees as a community.
Is Kona involved in that?
They are, yes. There's a full list of the stakeholders included in the agenda item as an attachment. We held public meetings at the end of March, on March 27th and 28th. Those were very well-attended. We had about 70 attendees at each meeting. Some areas of interest popped out at those meetings, and those included public education. People really felt like they needed more assistance with making good tree management decisions on their property. City communication and how we communicate with the public about trees, and the land development code came up quite a bit, especially in regards to protected trees. And we're also meeting with special interest groups, like local certified arborists, master gardeners, business owners, and homeowners associations. My contact information is on the Tallitrees website, so if anyone is interested, I'll come to anyone's meeting or help facilitate a meeting to talk about the plan and get Our consultant is performing an internal review, and that's really a good, hard look at all the programs and policy, including land development code and management techniques that we use to manage our trees. So this is, this is a major benefit, since they have so much experience doing this for other cities. They're going to give us an unbiased look at, at what we're doing, and they'll be able to have the perspective of what other cities have done that has worked and hasn't worked, and factor that into the recommendations that they make for us. They're doing interviews with key staff. They're looking at all our planting programs, including city programs like Adopt a Tree, our yearly Arbor Day events, how we manage planting through the land development code, landscape design, street trees and street tree regulations, tree removal during development, city response to tree maintenance issues, and tree protection, which again, has come up a lot. There was major perception at the public meetings that we had, that the tree code has been changed and weakened over time. So I did include in the agenda item, the language from city code regarding protected trees. In 2004, with input from a citizens committee, there was some updates made to the environmental management ordinance, mostly that updated the credit and debit lists that we use to manage tree removal, preservation, and planting, and that accounted for species and size. So the idea was to encourage preservation, protection, and planting of our more high-value species. So that was the major change, and the current code is summarized in the agenda item. The consultant's review might result in recommendations for changes or improvement to ensure consistency with the goals that we develop. Our total tree canopy coverage, these are the results of the Urban Tree Canopy Study, reveal that our total tree canopy coverage was 55%. That means that 55% of the land in Tallahassee is shaded by trees. So to put that into context, looking at comparable cities, that is one of the highest-recorded tree canopy coverages in the nation. There's lots of variables when you're comparing development pressure, population size, land size. So it's not super-relevant to compare ourselves to other cities, but I say that to help you put into context, that this is a lot of trees. We really have a lot of trees, a lot to work with here. And 71% of our urban forest is on private property. So that's 2/3 of the urban forest. So this illustrates why it's important to work as a community when we look at how we manage our trees. So looking at this map, we wanted to zoom in to some areas and kind of put this into context. The first thing I noticed was downtown is relatively below average, which is to be expected, it's a higher, more intense land use. I wanted to look at some of these areas. This 20% and 13% is relatively low compared to our average 55%, so I wondered, what specifically are these areas? That's actually FAMU and FSU's campuses. So they have large sports fields that obviously bring their average down, which is to be expected. We love sports and we want our sports fields. But it's also such a good illustration of how good planting and well-planned landscapes have trees that make a major impact. When you go to these campuses, especially FSU, and look around, you think, what a beautiful campus. You don't really think this needs more trees, because it's been planned for so long. They're putting their trees where they have maximum impact. It also tells us that even in a very intense use, I think the college campuses are some of the most intense land use that we have in the city, there's still space for trees, there's still space for really good trees. There's canopy density, just to make that easier to see. And then there's a 1954 aerial that shows how the area has changed over time. You can see land clearing around the college campuses as they were being built, and you can see that the tree cover has filled in over time. Looking at another area that's higher than average, this little spot, still close to downtown, still a relatively intense use, but more residential, there's some schools, there's residential area designed around a city park. There's smaller lots, so it's still relatively intense, but there's lots of space for trees. So this area has a very, very full canopy. And you can see over time, some agricultural use there in the corner that has filled in and become forested, some development areas that are now heavily treed, and lots, just lots of green space. We've already decided as a community that we value our rural spaces and our trees, and we know that we're a growing city, and that's a major motivation to develop this plan, to ensure that we have the right policies in place to allow us to grow with our trees. Our comprehensive plan already identified that we prefer infill development over suburban sprawl, new development. So we have identified our urban service area and the MMTD, where we have more intense development. And in these areas, planning for trees becomes especially important. We should be planning space for trees that works in perpetuity, so that as lots develop or buildings change, ideally, the space that we reserved for trees doesn't have to change. So look at the chain of parks, Cascades Park, designated areas for trees in perpetuity. And also, street trees are very important, especially in the MMTD, where we prioritize walking and biking. There's lots of competition for space in that area. So trees are important too, because if we want a walkable, bikeable community, we also want it to be comfortable, we want, we want our trees to shade those streets and those sidewalks. So lots of competition for space, but it can be done, because we're doing it. That's a 1954 aerial, and 2015 tree cover, and it shows the change over time. Our canopy has grown 60% as our population has grown six times. So some of this is agricultural transition, that's very typical for American cities as they move towards residential development and more development. They actually have more trees as they transition from the agricultural use, but we did try to limit that. With this particular study, the area of interest is what you see on the screen, so we kind of zoomed in on the downtown there. So lots of trees that were planted by citizens as they moved in, trees planted through development, through city programs, and trees just kind of growing everywhere in the areas in between. When cities do urban tree canopy analysis, they look at economic factors when they're analyzing the distribution of trees. Many cities that look at this find that as household income changes, tree density changes. So when you look at the blue map that's to the right, that shows household income, and it gets darker as household income gets higher. Compared that to a canopy map, it really shows no correlation here in Tallahassee. So we're doing very well. Trees are equitably distributed. Everyone benefits from trees, property owners benefit from having trees on their property, decreasing cooling costs, increasing real estate value. So this is good news for us, but certainly something that is good to know and good to keep track of over time. Now we'll get into the trees. We had a 3% sample public tree inventory done by our consultant. Tree inventory looks at public trees, and it's an individual assessment of trees in the public right-of-way. So that includes looking at each tree's species, size, condition, other attributes about the location, and geolocating the trees, so that we can track them over time. We do not have a full public tree inventory, and that's really the standard for best management of public trees. Our community beautification division did recently get a grant for completing a portion of the city, so we are working towards it. But doing an inventory is not just about collecting information about trees. After we collect this information, we become aware of tree maintenance issues and removals that the city then has to respond to. So we need to be prepared with the time to do that, the budget, the equipment, the staff. So it's a big undertaking, this will take several years, but we're doing this right, we're working in manageable chunks, where we can inventory some of our public trees, respond to those maintenance issues, and then carry on with another section of the city. But this will take time. And we do a 3%, 3% to 6% sample is considered representative, and the bigger the city and the more trees it has, the smaller percent you can do, and still consider it a representative sample. So our consultant recommended 3% to us, but it is an estimate. We look at several different metrics to assess the overall health of our urban forest, and each of these have general industry standards. These are general, all urban forests are different, so over time, we can adjust what our ideal is. But to start, we can compare ourselves to the recommended and see, see where we fit. Age distribution is a measure of trees in different age classes. You want diverse set of age classes, so you always have a young generation of trees to repopulate as mature trees die. If you look at the column in the left, that's recommended percentage, 40% young trees, and then 30 established, 20 maturing, and 10% mature. Our column is in the middle, Tallahassee's percentages, and we're at 67% young trees. We have a strong young tree population, which is good, but if you look at the following, established, mature, maturing, we are low. So we're on a trajectory to improve those numbers over time with our strong tree planting programs, and we should continue that. But it does show us that preservation of mature trees is important, if we don't want to continue to lose that percentage of our trees. And then we tried to do an age class projection, there are many, many variables to this, but it just kind of gives us an idea of why this is a long-term plan. That bottom in the green is our mature trees, and it shows us there at 5% where we started, and then in 2048 is when we'll actually be at 11%. So at the recommended level of mature trees. So that's 30 years. This just shows that this is, this is a long-term plan, and we need to make our policies, stick with them, and measure ourselves over time to make sure that we're hitting our goals. Another thing we look at is condition of trees. The industry standard here is have as many trees in good condition as possible. So we're doing fairly well, honestly. 78% of our trees are in fair condition. That's not unusual. When we do these assessments of public trees, we're looking root to tip. So when we assess the roots of the tree, really all we can look at is root space. And typically, your urban trees, your public trees, have constricted root space with pavement and sidewalks, utilities. So that's going to bump the condition down a little bit. It's pretty typical for cities to see the highest proportion of their trees, near 70, 70%, 60, 70%. But this does tell us that there's room for improvement, and it also tells us to be prepared, to recognize tree issues as we move forward with an inventory. There's trees out there that need attention. Species diversity, this is, this is great news. Florida's a diverse state, so it follows that our urban forests would be diverse, but we're really doing well here. The industry standard for species diversity is no more than 10% of one species should make up your tree population. That big wedge, the red wedge, is 23% other, so 80-plus species that are less than 2% of the population. So that's good. We have one species that's over that recommended 10%. At 15% is Carolina Laurel Cherry, or Cherry Laurel. This is a native species, very common. It seeds itself readily. It's valuable to wildlife, birds do like it. So it's to be expected that its population is high. I'm not super-concerned about this, I don't think it's a red flag. It just tells us that this population is high, it could be controlled in areas where we could have more valuable trees. Our second-most populated species are water oak and laurel oak, again, native trees, common trees, but not great urban trees. Water oak and laurel oak are not very long-lived, they're weak-wooded, they're prone to storm, storm damage. So really, our goals start to pop out at us, just by knowing what we have. Our most valuable urban tree species should be at the top of this list. So over time, we can change our planting programs, improve our planting programs and policies, to make sure that we're encouraging the planting of our more high-value trees. Live oak is at 7%, that's pretty good. And right underneath it, at 6% is camphor tree. Camphor tree is an invasive species, it's exotic. It's a, it's not just a bad tree, it's short-lived, weak-wooded, but it's also, it's a bad tree factor. It makes more trees, it outcompetes our native trees. So we could definitely work to control this number of camphor trees in the city. And again, our really valuable urban trees should make up the highest proportion of our urban forest. Species suitability is the right tree planted in the right place. There's several things we look at for species suitability, but the species should match the location and vice versa. We should have trees that are able to grow into maturity without a preponderance of maintenance needs. Their needs should be met by the site that they're planted at. So cities look at several different things. Hardscape conflict is very common. All cities kind of struggle with how to fit sidewalks and streets and trees together in kind of the same place, because we want, we want all of them in the same place. We want trees that shade our streets and sidewalks to make it comfortable to move around. 70% is no sidewalks present. So that's good, but I know we move forward with retrofitting sidewalk projects in the city, so this shows us that there, there's a lot of areas without sidewalks. 3% sidewalks present and conflicting. So that's pretty good, it's a low number. I think we're aware of hotspots where we can do some more work, and we're already working on a list of minimum right-of-way widths required for various species, so we're working on improvements there. Overhead utility conflicts. 58% of trees that were sampled were observed with lines present and potential conflict. So that doesn't mean active conflict, but it does mean these are areas where our utility foresters are going back and continuously trimming. And these are mostly areas where trees are growing, not where they're planted. So this is a continual maintenance issue for us. We do have an approved list of species suitable for planting near wires. It's applied to our own projects, and it's required during development projects, but in natural areas, this is, this is a major maintenance issue. Wind resistance, this one is really interesting. The University of Florida published research identifying the wind resistance of regional species, so from low wind resistant to high wind resistance. And we kind of plugged that research into our own numbers, and found that 37% of our urban forest is made up of low wind resistant species. So that's going to be your laurel oaks and your water oaks, and definitely the invasive-type species like camphor and Chinese tallow. So again, can see goals jumping out at us for what we need to do and areas we need to improve. This one isn't about eliminating low wind resistant species, like those water and laurel oaks are our native trees, they belong in our woodlands, and pines rate relatively low. But they're a natural part of our landscape, we don't want to eliminate pines. So this one is about balance, and we can use multiple strategies to encourage planting wind-resistant species. Our Adopt a Tree program has been factoring this research into the trees they offer through that program since it was published. We can also take a look at other programs, and possibly even our tree and credit debit lists to factor this in, and make sure we're encouraging the planting of wind-resistant species. Now we've got a couple more. Thank you. We'll get a couple more maps from our consultant as final deliverables with the master plan. Forest fragmentation shows us continuity of canopy. So this shows us where corridors are, edge canopy, patch canopy, perforated, and core. So core canopy and just canopy continuity in general, wooded corridors, are very valuable for social and economic reasons, but also very valuable to wildlife, especially migratory And they're also less vulnerable to invasive species. So this is a long-term and kind of a big-picture planning tool that we'll be able to use to try and make connections across property lines.
Thank you.
And then priority planting sites. This map identifies areas where we could plant trees and then prioritizes those in a ranking system. So it looks at permeable surfaces, so grass areas, non-treed, and then eliminates purposely non-treed areas like sports fields, and it ranks them based on certain variables that we've decided were important. For example, proximity to hardscape, which reduces sedimentation going into our water, it reduces stormwater runoff, and also the urban heat islands, so those areas are very important. And also prioritizes proximity to our riparian areas. So as I go through these priority rankings, you can kind of see it start clustering nearer to roads, nearer to more-developed areas, and our riparian waterways. So another kind of big-picture planning tool that we can use to prioritize our own projects and where we're putting our budget money, and really maximize the benefits of our trees, and maximize our investment in these types of things. So I mentioned a self-assessment that we did with our stakeholders. And we look at various factors that indicate the sustainability of our urban forest. It's not measured just by the trees, but by the framework of cooperation and the management approach that we use to manage our trees. So looking at our trees, we decided we did really good with tree canopy coverage, we have a lot, but we have room for improvement as far as composition. The players are those people who interact and influence our urban forest, so neighborhood action, our large private landowners, green industry, city divisions, obviously. We're doing moderate to good to most of these. The city divisions, across divisions cooperate very well. And these stakeholder meetings were really very valuable, because it kind of started making those connections, it established that relationship, and we'll continue to meet even after the final approval of the plan, so that we can continue to work together towards common goals. And our tree management approach, again, moderate to good in most things, but we did rate low in management, where the best management practice is to have that full tree inventory, which we don't have. So this isn't necessarily a measure of low performance, but a gap in the tools that we need to be more proactive with our management of public trees. And to recap, this is where we're at now. We've received most of the urban tree canopy assessment results, community input is ongoing. We'll compile those results towards the end of this month and into June, set our goals with the help of our consultant, and we'll develop strategies that we can use to achieve those goals. We'll be able to review a draft plan at the end of the summer, and then we're looking at final plan delivery in this fall, in September.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that, Mindy. Mindy, if you have staff here, would you mind just doing introductions, so that we have a sense of who you're working with?
Sure. Cherie Bryant is here, Greg Harden is here from Growth Management, if there's any questions about code. Artie White is here. And we've also got one of our subconsultants, Felsey, was the Florida Environmental Land Survey. They performed the sample inventory portion of the project, so they have a representative here as well. Oh, I didn't even see them back there. Jennifer McGavro, our urban forestry specialist in community beautification, and Kenny Welsh, the superintendent in parks. Anybody else hiding?
Thank you, got them covered. Thank you very much for a very, very thorough presentation, and I also see, excuse me, Kathleen Brennan, who, whose daughter was over two, a year and a half ago, two years ago, her daughter hosted a jam-packed session on urban forest planning, and I think Commissioner Miller came right back to the commission and raved about it, and said, "We have got to, got to, got to do, got to do more." And so you all, on a regular basis, continue to lift this issue up and do the regular basis continue to lift this issue up and do the difficult work, and we really do appreciate that. And all of the neighborhood associations and other neighborhood advocates who keep Tallahassee the county beautiful, who's been doing this work for a long time, helping to keep our community beautiful and growing. Just want to thank all of those advocates for keeping this issue at the forefront. Commissioners, are there any questions, comments? Commissioner Miller?
I have comments, but I don't know when you want to have public speakers.
Actually, why don't we do that now, and then we'll go to any commission comments? I believe there were a couple of speaker forms that came through.
And ended up, we got about a half dozen, Mayor.
Okay.
They've trickled in as the presentation was underway, and if there are others who wish to speak, they can fill out a form, and I'll call you after I get these. The first is Anne Biddling-Meyer, and then Tabitha Fraser. If you'd give your name and address, we would appreciate it, and we'll give you three minutes.
I'm Anne Biddling-Meyer. 1920 Harriet Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. I was one of the co-founders of Tallahassee Arbor Day. So, we've been planting trees since 1982. I'm really happy to see this kind of survey being done. Jennifer's done a very, very good job and very comprehensive in getting information together. One thing I am concerned about is the multimodal design, the most recent one I see going in on the corner of Monroe and Glenview. And the building comes right up to the sidewalk, and there is no room for any landscaping there. So, how can we have shaded sidewalks and shade for pedestrians and bicyclists if we build the building right up to the sidewalk? In addition, on May 24th, Willis Dairy, there is going to be another urban canopy seminar of sorts with a few speakers. And the Willis Dairy, as you know, is a charming place. It's really wonderful. The public is invited. Anybody's invited, and we're putting together sort of a follow-up to this. So, hope to see you all there.
Anne, I'm sorry. You must have been hiding behind one of these things. Of course, you've been a stalwart on this, and we want to appreciate you as well, of course. Next speaker.
Next is Tabitha Fraser, and then Kim Ross.
Hi, I'm Tabitha Fraser, 32303 Alvinage Drive. And I just want to thank you for moving forward with this urban forestry. I think it's wonderful, the right direction, and I'm glad to say that I was invited. I was one of the internal players with my nonprofit that is called LeonTrees.org. And it actually was started with a program that I worked with the county and city. But, attending these meetings and going to the public hearings, I just wanted to give a little bit of information on, in my opinion, what the public flavor is. When Mindy mentioned that a lot of people talked about the land developmental code, that is correct. And what was really reflected is a desire for a statement of community values in our land development code. Something to the effect of, "We are Tree City USA. We have huge heritage oaks. This is something of value to you, to us as a community. When you come in to develop, we will give a higher priority to people that work with tree, with our land." And what the public, something else, these public meetings, yes, there were 70-plus people. The woman from Davy Group, who has done this in multiple cities, said she had never seen such public engagement. Her mind was blown. The number-one thing was lack of communication. A lot of people, there's this distrust, which personally really bothers me. I think that there's lots of things that we can do to ameliorate this and work for it as a community. And so, one of the things that I think that is needed, so this is wonderful, but there wasn't really detail. A lot of the conversations were guided. And so, I didn't really feel that there was an opportunity for people to get specific. And so, things that I think that we need to move forward is, when we're talking about the urban surface area, right now, all that we manage as a community is 30%. And when she said that 70% is in private property, and we're talking about private property, we're talking about the thing that got people upset, the Cascades Park development. When you hear the word "private property," you think of a home, but that's not really what we're talking about in the urban surfaces area. We're talking about things that are going to be available to the public. So, it might be a private entity. And so, I'm advocating for all the trees in the urban surface area to be managed by a city forester. We already have written in our city ordinances, reference to exceptional specimen trees. Now, I actually talked to the forester who had this put in there along with Anne Biddling-Meyer. And it's a somewhat vague term, and it's not species-specific, but when they told me why they put it in there like that. So, an exceptional specimen tree is something that gives us our sense of place. It might not be a local tree. What if it's a Japanese maple that every year in November, everyone that drives down that street is like, "Wow, that tree is incredible"? That defines our sense of place. Now, when we're going to be doing this tree survey, I recommend that we actually reach out to the public. I did a tree survey called the Great Tree Challenge, and in 30 days, I had over 400 citizens give trees that they thought were valuable to this community, trees that they thought were exceptional specimen trees. This is, we really need to increase community engagement, not just these aerial photographs, not just this hiring out. We have a wonderful resource with FAMU and with FSU. There should be town, I think I might do this second one. There should be town and gown efforts with students, with interns. There's so many environmental programs.
I think that's because you've used three minutes, and it's telling you to stop.
Sure. So, there's lots that I can say. I have yet to have a private meeting with anyone that is working on this. I have examined these ordinances in detail. I've talked with a lot of people. I run a nonprofit that is filled with people that are really concerned with our trees. And so, I know I only have three minutes, but I would really encourage more personal engagement. We need a city board that is specifically dedicated to urban trees. I love the Tallahassee trees, or the Tally Trees. It needs to be its own independent website, not through the Tallahassee.gov. This is something that a lot of municipalities have. This will really help citizens feel that they have engagement, where they can see where these trees are. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kim Ross, followed by Randy Dinkler.
All right. Can I just talk really loud like this? Is that all right? Because I'm afraid of the microphone. Kim Ross, 1203 Buckingham Drive. I don't have too much more to add to the previous two ladies' statements, so I'll be very brief. First, I do want to say thank you all for, and thank you to our urban forester and this committee for moving this process forward, for having this process, for the commitment to community engagement. And then I also want to call out and appreciation Commissioner Miller, who, when we all came and complained about what had happened, pointed out where we could go to actually impact, including this meeting, and she's been posting about that. So, thank you. As far as the public meetings go, not only were they full, but they were actually above capacity. And so, when I went to the public meeting that I was able to go to, I actually was turned away. So, I mention that because I want to, I mean, it was beyond fire code, right? I wasn't turned away because of who I am.
This time.
This time, yes. But I mention that because I do think that there's probably room for an additional public meeting. I think Ms. Fraser had some great ideas as to how to go about doing that and opening it up for a little more broader conversation. And then finally, I just want to drive home the need for a stronger heritage tree ordinance, one that empowers your employees to actually say no or to push back. I feel like that's, regardless of the language and whether or not it's changed, that has really slipped away. And I think that, and the presentation was excellent, I think that the age distribution percentages indicates a need for a very strong protection of our mature trees as well. So, thank you very much, and thank you again for putting this together and for listening.
Thank you.
Randy Dinkler, and then Stephen Martin.
I'm also going to yell. My name is Randy Dinkler. I live at 552 East Georgia. This doesn't work right. Okay. So, I have four recommendations that I would like for you all to think about. The first has to do with pesticide use in the city, which I have personally observed has been quite damaging to the understory and small trees. Huge amounts of landscaping, not trees per se, but landscaping was done with Cascade Park. Then I saw city crews come around spraying Roundup, killed thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of small vegetation. That really hurt to see. The second thing, in reviewing what was posted last week on the website, there was talk about wind resistance and planting species that would be more wind resistant, which I think is a great idea. But I would also point out that part of wind resistance is having a healthy tree with a healthy root system. And I think we've all seen this. If we drive around Tallahassee, we see these trees that just simply don't have enough space around them, and they're squeezed to death, and that makes the tree very stressed and unhealthy. So, I would like to see some revisiting of the size of the root zone that's preserved, some retrofitting, but certainly in the future, maybe a larger root zone. Third thing that I have on my to-do list is, I would love to see the city start phasing out overhead utility lines and going wherever possible to burying the tree lines. I've looked into the economics of it. I know it's very expensive, but I think in the long run, it is actually less expensive than constantly trimming the trees, sometimes savagely trimming the trees. Then you have all the power outages, the emergencies crews working overtime. I think over time, it amortizes out, and it actually probably will save the city money in the long term. So, I would like to see us have an aggressive program to start burying lines. Ultimately, I think it doesn't really matter what criteria the city has to protect trees, as long as we continue to allow trees to be taken down in exchange for money. And this is what we saw at Cascade Park, which infuriated so many of us, myself included, especially because it was done with tax dollars subsidizing it. And then we saw it again recently at Envision Bank, and I've seen it all around town. I would like to see us move to a system where protected trees are removed only for the most compelling reasons, never just for convenience. If a tree is of a certain size or species or type to be protected, I would like to move to a system where the development fits the site and not the other way around. We just have to move to a different model if we're really going to be serious about protecting trees. And trees provide a lot of free public services for us. This is not just about sentimentality or aesthetics. This is really important, especially now that Tallahassee has announced that it wants to be a carbon-neutral city in the next more or less 20 years. We're going to have to do a better job of protecting our urban canopy because it's really critical as summers are going to get progressively hotter. And trees provide so many important services, not just shading buildings and lowering utilities, but so many other services: erosion protection, cooling, flooding runoff mitigation, pollution scrubbers, habitat, air purifiers, oxygen generators, noise buffers. Trees are our friends, and they even have an effect, positive effect, on our mental health and people's moods. So, I've actually seen articles, like City Portland puts price tags on its trees and says, "This is what this tree is worth to the public." So, that would be my largest suggestion, is that we stop allowing these variances for payment. I think we need to protect the trees first and let the development fit the site. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Stephen Martin. He'll be followed by Kathleen Brennan, and she is the last speaker I have.
Stephen Martin, 2625 Stonegate Drive. She mentioned Portland, Oregon. Yeah, I've said this, oh, God, probably been 10 years ago, maybe five, seven years ago. Yeah, I was in Portland, Oregon 45 years ago. They've taken measures in Portland, Oregon then that have yet to be taken in Tallahassee. Tallahassee has a, Tallahassee has a long way to go.
If you speak a little bit louder, I believe others will be able to hear you.
I said, "I was in Portland, Oregon 45 years ago, and at that time, they had done more than Tallahassee has yet to do." Tallahassee has a long way to go. My perspective seems to be different than other people. I look at this as, at best, a half-hearted commitment towards environmental protection. Yeah, it's been 10 years ago that I started following closely what's been going on, all because of one particular development. And I invite anybody to tell me that what's had happened to that land. And I know one of the developers is here. It's been an exercise in protection of trees. Come on, people. It was mentioned before, about 70-plus percent of the land is privately owned. So, I was at the meeting with Ms., one of the meetings that Ms. Mormon had, and she told me at the beginning of the meeting, I'd be able to speak. I was never able to, as an individual, get up and speak, because I had things I wanted to say that it seems nobody else was thinking about. This, like so many other issues, goes so much deeper than we realize, so much deeper than we realize. At that meeting, there was mention made of invasive species and non-native species. And I wanted to make a comment in response to that. Yeah, invasive species are a problem. Non-native species are a problem. And when I think of invasive species and non-native species, the first species I think of, the human species. We are a big part of this problem, and I hope everybody in this room, myself included, is willing to acknowledge that. Yeah, there's been a public outcry over some trees that were cut down in Cascade Park. And yeah, I appreciate that, but those aren't the only trees. And I'm sorry that there hasn't been more of a public outcry for all of these developments that are going up. There's all this talk about 16- or 18-hour city, talking as if everybody wants that. Well, I can guarantee you, the canopy, the trees do not want that, and I myself do not want that. We're not native to this area. Most of us, myself included, couldn't live here without air conditioning. I don't think air conditioning serves the trees at all. If we're really going to be committed to environmental protection, we've got, and I see Mr. Tedder looking like he has before at me, we've got to really take a different look at everything, ourselves included, and our values. And this push for growth and development, and to think that bigger is better, more is merrier, we need to break free from that. We've got an economy that relies on our consumption. The idea is that the more we consume, the better the economy does. The better the economy does, the better off a population is. That leads to the logical conclusion that the more we consume, the better off we are. Something's wrong. That seems counterintuitive. We need to really go a lot deeper in this than we are.
That's in three minutes.
Right. I will shut up. I had a lot more to say.
Next speaker is Kathleen Brennan. And then we do have one more, which will be Sarah Coffin.
Hi, Kathleen Brennan, 4778 Lancaster Lane. Yes, my daughter put together the urban forest with the Leon County Extension Office. She was interning there at the Urban Forest Management Plan Workshop in the summer of 2016. And I think she's now got her master's in Public Administration and Environment and National Resources. Yay! So, hopefully, we can bring her back down here, but she's up in Ohio right now. She'd be very pleased with the progress that has been made. I mean, when we started this and brought up Rob, she, I shouldn't say "we," I'm taking it as the royal "we," she worked with the Extension Office to bring up Rob North from Tampa about their urban forest management plan. I mean, we knew Tallahassee loved trees, but we just hadn't codified it. And so, I'm so glad to get the data and find out where we're at and where we can go. And so, really, for her and for me, that's wonderful. I am concerned, though, as several of the speakers said, about the multimodal district. It's just ugly. It doesn't look like Tallahassee. It looks like South Florida when I'm driving down some of, you know, like Magnolia Commons. I mean, I do appreciate, though, I actually finally made myself go in there because I had been boycotting it. And I went in there, and there are a lot of trees in the parking, in the parking area, which will be beautiful in 20 years. So, I told Nancy Miller, Commissioner Miller, about this. I was like, "Okay, I confess. I actually went in there, and I looked at it. Yes, it's going to look great one day." So, but my caution with it is, as was mentioned, when we're walking on the sidewalk, you know, everybody knows how darn hot it is here, there's not the shade. And so, that's just the street view of what our city looks like. The multimodal district, I would like to see if that will be looked at. I know it was put in place when our economy was much more constricted, and I think we need to revisit that. I think it could be helpful in the long run, because I do think that growth is important for Tallahassee, but we definitely want to keep what Tallahassee means to us as we all appreciate the trees. The other thing I want to say is, the Citizen Advisory Council was another part of what they did down in Tampa, and I think that that was a very important part that worked alongside with the city government to keep in touch with the local citizen group. It sounds like you're doing a great job right now, but this would mean, it would put in place something that ongoing would have that conversation. So, that would be my other recommendation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen, could I ask her a question? Do you remember how old, how long the Tampa project has been going on?
Yes. So, I don't exactly remember when they started, but it was around 2000, I believe. And their projection was, they revisited it every five years. So, they looked at it at 5:10, 15:20. So, I know that that was the timeframe. So, I know that that was the timeframe. I can find out the exact date, but I think that's what I think.
I'll tell you, if you would email me his name again, because I have to go down there all the time, and I could go chat with him.
Great, wonderful. Thank you.
Final speaker, Mayor, is Sarah Coffin.
Hello, I'm Sarah Coffin. I live at 921 Caraway Street here in Tallahassee. And I just wanted to take this chance to tell you all face-to-face how absolutely devastated I am about what happened at Cascades Park. And I think as one person, I represent the feelings of many people, that those trees were murdered. They are irreplaceable. And I hope that what happened there can be used as an example of what to never let happen in this city again. And I am very happy that we're doing the Urban Forest Master Plan. I think that's excellent. I support all the previous comments that have been made. I do want to say that the ordinance does need to be revised. If we mean to protect the trees, the language has to be in the ordinance. The ordinance is a tree removal permitting process, and we must have an ordinance that reflects our values. And we can decide as a community, you know, the size and type of trees that are going to be preserved, like one of the other speakers said. Another idea, just two last ones, I just really want to emphasize about Cascades Park. But the other thing is, is that we need shaded parking lots, and we might want to do something creative using fruit trees in the environment. So, anyway, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
There are no additional speakers. Okay, great. Excuse me, thank you to each of the speakers who came. Commissioners, any questions, comments for staff? Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, you know, Mindy, in your study here, you had a couple of things that really stood out that I think need to be highlighted in your goals and objectives. One of those is the fact that seventy-eight percent of the plants are in fair condition. You know, when we first started this, I described it as a garden where you'd be very selective because when you take out something that you, the weed, it allows the plant that you want to flourish even more. And so, I think an emphasis on flourishing would be very important. Now, that's going to be hands-on management a lot, I know, but we've already got folks going out looking for invasives like cogon grass and things like that. So, I guess that part of this is probably, should be emphasizing management of invasives and also which trees do you prioritize and which ones don't you prioritize based on hazards and all the various things that you've highlighted in your talk. Also, the age distribution factor. I think that, well, and then that brings me back to the inventory of three percent. Is it going to be an ongoing project to expand that horizon? I mean, I'm assuming you're, you've got all these aerial photographs, and then you're going to go ground truth those with, go out there and see if your interpretations are correct based upon species. And I just wanted to make sure that was an ongoing process and that you, through the years, fill out more and more and more of what you know about the city. You know, we've talked about, a couple of times, about the seventy percent private ownership, and I was wondering if you go out to people's homes. Stan Rosenthal used to go out, and you're doing a wonderful job in replacing him. We didn't think we could do it, but I want to tell you that right now. But he did, used to go to people's homes and chat with them about which, the condition of their trees, which trees, if they were concerned about hazards, would be the first one to take out, or how they could manage things better. Do you do any of that?
I do as much as I can.
I was wondering.
This job does keep me very busy, but I am trying to do more of a group effort. So, I recently went to the Blairstone Forest Home, spoke with the homeowners association, someone from the homeowners association. So, kind of trying to do it at a neighborhood level rather than homeowner, to, just to make a broader impact when I do go out.
Well, you wasn't trying to write an urban forest management plan at the same time. So, are you looking at the ideas of other communities, the ways other folks manage, like Tampa, for example? Are you looking at their plans and for ideas that you could apply here?
Yes, ma'am. We've looked at several, and also, that's one of the benefits of working with this consultant is that they have so much experience and can tell us what other cities have done, what might work here.
Good. You know, I think it was Kathleen, I'm not sure who mentioned the Citizens Advisory Council. That's an idea to consider. I mean, I understand that there are a lot of, basically, players at the table when it comes to talking about this type of thing, but something like that might be worth considering for sure. Finally, the multimodal issue. I know everyone's tired of hearing me harp on this, but the speakers were so kind as to bring it up. We are supposed to have a consultant evaluating it. Are we going to get some report back in my lifetime?
It's supposed to come back in August.
August. I thought you were going to wait till November when I'm not here anymore. No. Yeah, but I would like that to happen, because we've been talking about it quite a while. And I've been also harping on the fact that if you, you've got to have space between the sidewalk and the street. If the sidewalk goes right up to the street, it's part of the street. If it doesn't, it's the sidewalk. I mean, people need that break and that protection. And if we're going to have a multimodal district that takes up eighteen percent of the city, then I think that it should include that up to six feet in between the sidewalk and the road, and then you can do planting. So, what else? I thought a lot of the speakers had really good suggestions, so I hope you can consider, you know, some of the things that you heard people say. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to the multimodal report coming back. I think the biggest problem with our multimodal district, it is too large. And so, something that looks good on Madison Street and Gaines Street perhaps does not look good on West Tennessee Street, west of Ocala, or on Magnolia Drive. And the challenge will be, how do we change that when some projects are already built and they will stick out? It'll be like a row of teeth with one missing, or a row of teeth with only one in. So, we're going to have to balance that when we look at the possibility of shrinking the district. This is a fantastic report. Tallahassee is known by its trees. Our canopy roads, our trees are something that, especially our live oak trees, make us different than any other place. And you can drive downtown in Tallahassee and see beautiful trees in the urban area as well as in the, in far out where we have dense forest. So, I think this is a great first step, and I appreciate the staff work that went into it.
Great, thank you very much. I just wanted to align myself with the idea around the urban's, Urban Forest Citizens Committee. And you can, you know, work, obviously work with the name there, but the Canopy Roads Committee, obviously, has limited jurisdiction and advice with regard to canopy roads. But given what you've just shared, one, I think it helps to organize the constituency so that we're not hearing, you know, in one voice after something's been done, but all along the way, and I'm not sure what the appropriate timeline is for that, whether we've got to make it all the way through the process, or whether it makes sense to constitute such a body sooner than later to give feedback along the way, organize feedback, and, you know, basically workshop some of the recommendations that came today, and maybe some of the recommendations that you received through the process. But would like to, at some point, get some feedback from the city manager around how the commission might go forward with constituting an additional advisory body specific to the urban forest, master plan and oversight. On the multimodal, you know, district, I'm, you know, obviously looking forward to whatever the staff brings back. But we are trying to balance obvious, you know, growth and sprawl. And these things, while disconnected in their words, are still very, very connected. What we do with trees, how we manage the urban forest, how we manage growth as the city continues to grow, is really important, and its environmental impacts are really important. If we don't do something to incent growth within the urban core, and we continue to let growth take place further and further out, as we said before, we all know that the city limits, the urban services area is probably maybe a hundred and three, a hundred and six square miles now, whereas the county boundaries go out an additional, you know, seven hundred square miles or eight hundred, you know, square miles in total for Leon County. What I don't want to see is, if we create, you know, a situation where we're not trying to incent more growth and development in the urban core, that you're now adding more lane miles, and you're now taking down more trees to build more development, to reduce the kind of tree cover that we've been talking about. I think that's, I think that's bad planning. And I think we have to hold both of those, and we can hold both of those, that one isn't mutually exclusively, exclusive, but we've got to recognize that balance. And I think that's been part of this conversation, but not very much so stated in it. So, good presentation, and look forward to the rest. Commissioners, anything? If not, no other questions, no other comments? All right, we stand in adjournment. Thank you all.